This is the July meeting for the Bay Harbor Planning Board. As usual, I'll have our members introduce themselves.
Lee Corbin.
John Vesper.
Merrick Laxley.
Bill Hamwood.
Tom Churchill.
Tom Myer.
And Merrick, welcome. This is Merrick's first meeting with us as a planning board member. I've graduated from the Board of Appeals. I think it's a step up. Maybe not.
I think that's still in debate.
All right. Well, glad to have you, Merrick.
Thanks.
First order of business, just the usual housekeeping things. As we go through our agenda items, we're gonna have several things that we have to do. It may seem a little awkward and time-consuming, but it is the required process. So please be patient. It takes some time to go through all of the items one by one. Some may not apply, but we still need to acknowledge that they don't apply. Also, I want to... We'll be right back. We've got Jeff Smith, if you don't know, our road enforcement officer. John Cunningham, the town attorney. And a new member of the staff, we have Isabella Harsley, who's a new town planner. She was sharing her time with Mayor Scott Selfwell. And Julia, also currently our technician for the evening.
A bad one. Not gonna work.
Welcome to have all of you there, too. So, we need approval of the minutes from the June 8th meeting. Can I motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June meeting.
And move? Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor? And our recording secretary for tonight is Tom Merrick. All right, moving right along. New business. We have Nicky Bay Holdings, 92 Wallpoint Road. They have two applications.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I apologize for interrupting, but could I bring something to your attention? I may be misreading the application, and I don't want to interfere with your deliberation whatsoever. But it occurred to me that I had seen a section in the site plan review ordinance that I thought I might draw to your attention. And if with your permission, I'll pass this over to you. It's section 170-64. And it deals with the ability of the board to decide that certain projects are de minimis and therefore don't require the same level of review. And having looked at this application, the thought entered my mind, which doesn't mean it has to enter yours. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Did it first meet also? Thank you.
Tom, may I make one suggestion?
Yes.
We have six people here, and the board is five people. So who's gonna get elevated to?
You.
I'm sorry.
No, she's on the board. He's first, and Merrick's second.
Right.
So it's automatically. Tom, you are elevated to the board.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so is there someone here representing Nicky Bay Holdings? Going once? If not, going twice?
Scott Larson says he's on his way.
I suggest...
Tom, Scott Larson says he's on his way if you want to go forward with the other application.
If you have an agenda, you'll notice that Booth Bay Harbor waterfront was the first item on the whole business that has been pulled for the evening. They were unable to make it, or maybe for whatever the reasons, they asked us to not hold on hearing on that item for tonight. So we're moving on to the new business. Since Nicky Bay isn't here, let's move on to PGC 4 LLC, Knickerbocker Group.
Every time I come here, I end up getting boosted at once, so I think I can only pay one time.
He's saying a tag.
We'll see if we can get the boards up with this not so great. Is there a preferred spot for some boards?
Right there.
Right there?
That's where you normally go.
Yeah.
I want a place titled for the board, but for the...
I know, for the people, yeah. We got three boards, so you mind if I put one? Yeah, you can put the existing photos next to each other, and then the elevations could go on the other side.
Is there anything you have that's not in the package that you've already reviewed?
You do have some existing photos in the... But I've included some here, too. And then I do have backup for calculations, but not sure if you need them. The calculations are on the tables, but essentially kind of showing how we get to distances and... But if you'd like existing photos...
I suggest you move the flight board out of the way.
Leave this on?
Actually, maybe I can just put it on.
That's what I was saying, Julie.
Might be better.
I want to hear.
Yes, like it's precarious anyway.
Is there any information that's not in the...
Uh, just more photos. So they have more photos in the elevation certificate that are pretty similar, but...
Thank you very much. Are we ready? Okay.
Hi, so Brent James from Knickerbocker Group, presenting on behalf of PGC Ford for a property located at 54 Grandview Avenue. One of the first pieces which to kind of discuss here is that this is map two lot four, but per the ordinance has been divided into two parcels along Grandview Avenue. There's a piece of the lot that is on the water side, and then there's one on the opposite side. So I had referenced that in sort of the opening statement, just because the other site, which we're referencing as parcel B, this being parcel A, essentially was permitted separately, so that's not a part of this presentation. But to start things off, kind of going over the actual site that we looked at. So the site is along Grandview Avenue. There's an existing cottage structure located on the site that's non-conforming to the highest annual tide setback. Essentially, it's a small kitchen, small bathroom, living room, bedroom. There is a loft space above that's fairly small. And then there's a deck, a wooden deck on one side to the north. And there's a stone patio that's sort of built into the ledge on the water side. There's also an existing gravel parking area just off of Grandview Avenue, which is room for two vehicles currently. And then on the north side of the site, there is an existing dock. And so some of the other constraints on the site, aside from, you know, being so close to the water or this non-conforming structure, is the... We do have Squirrel Island power coming right through the center. And then there is the sewer line for Squirrel Island as well. So actually, is it the sewer or is it the water line?
It's the sewer.
Sewer line, yes. So that comes through the center of the property. It's noted on the existing survey. But there's an easement. It's not a very large easement, but it's hatched out. And I believe it's about two feet on each side of the utility. So that kind of bisects the center of the site. On the northern part of the site, you know, there's a lot of ledge and rock croppings in this region. And there's a very large tree over here. And then on this side of the existing structure, there's a higher density of smaller spruce trees and some pine trees. So looking at this, initially, we were thinking of taking the existing structure and trying to renovate it in the same spot. So one of the pieces we did was we had contacted Warren Jarrow from Associated Design Partners for looking at... Because this is technically in the floodplain for FEMA, and it's the VE zone. So that line kind of goes right through and, for the most part, passes through the majority of the existing structure. Which would mean we would have had to raise the existing structure up, and then there are other pieces to make this basically buildable within the floodplain, which... So scrapped that. Although we did include the letter in the planning board submission to reference. But we did eventually decide that we would move the structure back and rebuild. So basically rebuilding and trying to get to the greatest practical extent that we saw fit as far as moving it back. And we did, we were able to move it beyond that 14-foot FEMA line and raising up the proposed finished floor level to about 16.5, so about two and a half feet above that 14-foot line. So essentially, the existing building in this proposal would be removed. The deck would be removed. Because the stone patio is built in to the granite ledge for the submission, we had kept it in there, thinking it's probably more invasive to remove it. And then locating the structure, you sort of see the angle has shifted because we have, one, tried to push it as far back and as close to the existing parking, which we're trying to maintain to not relocate that larger footprint on a different area of the site. And then we're working with the grades. You can kind of see the grading, and it kind of follows sort of the parallel to the building that we're proposing. The building would be another cottage sitting on this site, and it would be expanded per the calculations, which is just under the 30%. We had Booth Bay Region surveyors survey the existing property for, and do area volume calculations on the building, which is included. And as I mentioned, there is a loft space in this kind of higher... Basically, the roof kind of kinks and has a steeper portion which has loft. But that was not, it's not a large enough space to be included in the area, so that's not in. But essentially, that was their model for the volume. And they did not include the patio in the area, but they did include the deck. So that's in the calculations as part of the 30%. And then we also had them survey impervious surfaces. So they have their calculations here, which include areas like the parking, the building, the deck, rocks, ledge, basically all of the surfaces that are not vegetated. And so we looked at that, and then we also had them locate all of the trees on the site so that knowing that to put this behind the existing structure, that there would be some tree removal and that we'd have to follow up with replacing the trees. So we had them measure, and we had them identify the types of trees and the location on the survey so that we could propose revegetating and replanting trees. And I have a backup to... There's a chart included in the submission showing sort of the schedule of the distances from the highest annual tide. And I also have some backup showing sort of the lines where we took it from, closest point from the highest annual tide, if you'd like that. So getting towards the proposal, where we have essentially taken this as the existing footprint. We pushed this back sort of tight to the parking area while maintaining, not sort of working against the grades and building into the landscape and having to cut into what is not very deep soils. It's mainly a lot of ledge, very shallow here, probably why there's not many other trees aside from spruce and a pine tree in this area. And what we also had done was where we had pushed it up against this area, tight to the parking area, we had filled this area in as a planting bed, kind of submerged the building into the landscape. At the parking area, existing footprint is currently sort of retained by boulders, and we had planned on having this be a stone retaining wall. So sort of reworking that within the same footprint, more or less. And then expanding this way to bump up against the proposed structure and give us an area to... We're showing a propane tank under there, which has a setback from the building and cannot be located within the road setback. So it's basically just enough space to get that in there. And also, you know, there's ledge. And then as we get closer to this area, we're closer and closer to the electrical meter and power feeding Squirrel Island. So that's kind of one of the constraints in locating this. As you can see from the parking area, you go down a couple of stone paths to enter the building. There's a deck that sort of wraps around, not too dissimilar from the existing structure. The structure itself is pretty basic, very small. There's elevations over here, so we're not talking about something massive. The existing building would not allow for enough expansion to make anything too large. So, you know, we're talking about an overall height of 14 foot six to the top of the couvilla. And the couvilla, we did include in the volume calculations because it would be open to the space below. Although I don't think that the existing couvilla on the buildings is really just more decorative. So that wasn't included in the existing volume. From the deck, we have a small terrace here, seating area, which connects to a footpath that essentially ties the dock to this side of the property. Understanding that people would likely... This area is a little more grassy and would likely walk through the grassy areas, as I did many times visiting the site, and probably pack down the soil like you do on most trails. And so what we had included was having this footpath in the impervious calculation. So all of the areas of the building, the deck, terrace, footpath, parking, stone walls, you know, anything that was an impervious surface was included in here, despite whether this would be just a grassier people are walking through. That was sort of the way we wanted to look at that. Finally, we had added some plantings in here to sort of revegetate based on removals. There was, I think, 13 trees to remove from the existing site plan. So we've sort of spread those out throughout the property, knowing that we would have to find a good spot, given there's ledge and there's shallow areas for the trees to actually grow and to be able to sustain. So as far as our total impervious surfaces, you know, we're looking at proposing a 14.3% lot coverage, which is certainly underneath the 20% allowable. And as I mentioned, we're still underneath the 30% volume and area expansion, just right under that on our charts. And I guess I can open up for discussion.
Open it off to the board. Any questions or comments on this? Bill? When were the two lots divided into separate ownership?
They're not divided into separate ownership, but per the ordinance, I think it's on in the table. It basically says that a road before 1971, you are to look at that lot as two separate parcels. So previously, there has been development on this from a different design team. And, you know, and there's been permitting through DEP as well. And so one of the things that they had to deal with was the fact that they had to split these two so that they couldn't include this area, which is, you know, which has ability to increase their amount of lot coverage on that side. So they sort of took a hit on that side of the road, and, you know, that's essentially... So it's one owner, but we're looking at it as two separate parcels. So on this side, okay.
I think I heard the answer to the key question is when they did the work on the B parcel.
Yep.
They did not include any of the A parcel area or coverage or anything.
Yes, correct. And, yeah, that was...
So the evaluation stood alone.
Yep. Yeah, and like I said, that would have helped them as far as lot. They could have been able to increase the impervious surfaces on that side, which...
Just making sure we're not double counting.
Yeah, no, we're not double counting. So this was, we had this, you know, the survey was this property, and we have information from this, but it's sort of, you know, there's some tied together in a sense, but it's basically its own site.
Jeff, you're okay with the division of these?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, John and I worked out this when they built the two houses across the road.
So these two parcels could have separate owners. They don't, at the moment, they could have separate owners.
Correct. I can imagine that you could, you could split. I mean, maybe...
That's a different animal.
Yeah. I couldn't really answer on that, but I could imagine possibly. But that's not necessarily in the plans for current development to have two separate owners. But I know they need to be looked at as two parcels per code. Yeah, for the shoreline zone.
There are separate tracks.
Anything else?
Uh, what?
Yeah, go ahead. I have two or three questions.
Sure.
When you remove the cottage...
Yes.
I mean, you probably don't know yet what's underneath it. What is the intent of what goes back exactly where it is? Try to populate that with some soil, some land?
Yeah, so right now, if you were to look under, peek underneath, it kind of drops down a little bit behind this stone patio area. So this is all stone patio, and it steps up, right? And so it drops down, and then there is some soil, some loose rock underneath. So the plan was to revegetate the footprint of the existing house, cottage, rather. But looking underneath the deck area, that's only a small portion of that is, you know, is something you could revegetate without adding soil that would probably just erode because it starts to slope. So we did not include that as far as our, like, calculations for impervious. So we weren't removing footprints and taking back that area, so...
I'm looking more at the contour, and so my question is, when you go into a vegetated area, you remove six trees, and you build a new cottage, you're gonna create water. Now, you have, where's that water gonna go? If you have the ability to retain that water, you're not changing it. Don't. You're adding more fresh water.
Yeah, I mean, we are actually adding considerable amount of vegetation and planting beds surrounding pretty much everything. So, and we're also replanting trees this whole area. And we're, you know, sloping to a rip-rope surface from the patio so that it has, you know, sort of a buffer. It's not coming off hard on the landscape, you know. So it's, I don't see that as an issue. We're creating a similar condition as far as the building is not very much, you know, not much larger of a footprint and height-wise is actually lower than the existing structure, and more of a shallow roof than the existing structure. And so, you know, by making a few moves and pulling this back and revegetating some of this and sort of planter buffers and planting beds around the development, which is, you know, we're working with landscape architects to kind of make sure everything is going to work out fine. We also have, I think I mentioned this, SRJ Engineering, who worked on the previous project over here, looking at, and they sort of did a review of drainage. And so we've kind of shown arrows of predictive drainage paths based on the slopes of surfaces. So, you know, that was considered, the fact that we are sort of adding 30% larger footprint in a sense.
And I see overhead wires. I know it's here, but I haven't been able to find it here.
Yeah, there are...
Can this confirm that the sewage connects into the street?
So in terms of, there are, the existing structure has overhead wires.
But what about the other utilities?
Yeah.
I'm sure they tie into the street.
So the existing cottage that's here right now, on this stone patio, interestingly enough, you can remove a stone, and then there's a sewer pump built right into it. And that pumps the sewage back to the adjacent parcel in a holding tank, which then pumps it back into the sewer. And so what we had done was, working with Chris Higgins from the Sewer District, who's a great guy, looked at the proposal and knowing that we weren't gonna keep what was in the patio right now because, one, you know, it probably needs to be upgraded in large, and it's kind of a difficult area within that existing patio. Planning to replace the sewer pump because this is downhill of the road. And then he gave two options, looking at, you know, the configuration. We could maintain that existing sewer connection where we cross back here, and there's a holding tank that pumps into. And then we also have the ability to go straight into the sewer line. So essentially, the pump just needs to be sized for the head pressure to enter the sewer. So I did, I do believe that Chris had forwarded a letter to Jeff as well, basically kind of stating there's two kind of options. And, you know, essentially, we'll work with them on making sure that the new proposal, you know, does not impact any of the other sewer services and, you know, is in accordance with what...
And I assume the domestic water comes from the other property as well?
No, the domestic water currently is, I mean, you can, there's a water line dast on the existing, but it's basically almost, you know, above ground seasonal water that comes through there.
So that's what I meant. It's just becoming a year round.
So this does have its own water meter.
But it's only, its intention is to stay a seasonal property, or is it...
I, yeah, so seasonal, seasonal property, you know, I mean, it'd be nice to use it year-round, but, yeah, the intent is to basically...
Concern is the utility of the use.
Yeah, exactly. I think without year, if we have year-round water available, we would tap into it. Otherwise, we would have to do seasonal, yeah. So there's no well, there's no plans for a well or anything to not use the town water. Its plans are to connect to...
Town water to the street.
Yeah, to connect to the town water, the town sewer, and CMP connection for power, essentially from the, you know, the existing locations. There's not, there's not a lot of difference there, except like I mentioned, the sewer pump currently lives in that existing patio. We would relocate it basically beyond the building, so...
Anybody else?
Yes, there is. Yeah, you told us, I believe, that the existing cottage has bedrooms?
Yep, it does have a bedroom. So on this side of the cottage, it's all a bedroom where you can access the loft space, which is this kind of higher peak. The center of the cottage is living space, and this far end has a very small kitchen and a very small bathroom. You don't want to be in there with someone else.
And the new structure, it's not, it's not...
The new structure, so basically, the new structure, we enlarged the kitchen space, which is now open to a living... It's more like a studio space at the center of the building. And then we have a small bathroom, and we have a utility room. They sort of have a utility room now that's accessed from the back. So the, basically, by opening up the spaces, making cathedral ceiling, it's becoming, you know, it's very... With that slight increase in 30%, we're able to achieve a lot more by not dividing the spaces up and putting the ceiling in, feeling more open. So it's an open concept plan, so essentially, the same, just kind of reworked.
Only efficiency, other than the separate bedrooms.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's separate bedroom, really definitely.
I'm sorry, it's all in the suite room.
Yep.
Bedroom, no bedroom?
I guess you would say multi-use living space, so, yeah.
Efficiency apartment?
Yeah, so essentially, if you had a living space where you had, say, pulled out a couch or something like that, that would be, those are the space constraints. To be able to get an actual kitchen that's not four feet by four feet into this small cottage, you gotta give something up. And the only thing that you can really interchange unless you want to do your cooking in the bathroom would essentially be the living and the bedroom space, combining those into one. And it's actually combined, and the kitchen's open to that space as well, so it's really all open on one end.
Right, but my question is, is this a place that people can live? Or is it a place where people can cross it freely and come back and walk?
I think it would be probably both situations where people could spend the night. I could see this being used as, you know, essentially, basically being like similar cottage function, seasonal function that's used by people that would rent it. And, but, you know, ultimately, you know, I don't know exactly how long people would stay in this cottage, or if it would be, you know, like one night use, or if it would be something that if someone rents something across the road, they could spend the night in the cottage and have the use of that as well. So I'm not completely sure on that piece, but it's essentially functioning as a cottage, which is replacing the existing.
I think it's fair to say for the purposes of our code, this is a dwelling unit.
Yes, exactly. So it meets the definition of a dwelling unit by, you know, I think, does the definition include kitchen space? It, it meets the definition of a dwelling unit by, you know, I think, uh, does the definition include kitchen space, a restroom space?
Yes.
A, yeah.
Let's go back.
I think I, yeah, I think I mean.
I'm going back here again, nice paragraph.
Cooking and sleeping.
Cooking, bathing and sleeping.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Um, my perspective on this is, is a little bit different. When you're looking at our ordinance, in essence, when you've taken down that existing building.
Yep.
You have a clean slate. You can build a new building anywhere on the site that you choose to.
Well, within, within constraints of, of utilities, existing docks and, yeah.
And our ordinance says to the greatest extent practical.
Yep.
Now, practical is an open word and that can be interpreted in many ways. What I'd like to hear from you is how you decided to put the building here where you have ledge and removing lots of trees. I call it lots of trees, all major ones, ten, twelve inch diameter trees. As opposed to the other end of the site, closer to the dock, where the topography is far flatter. There's no removal of trees required, there's no interference with utilities. It seems like that's a far better space and it's further removed from the shore in essence, a greater extent. And it seems practical to locate it at that location as well, perhaps even more practical.
Yeah, well, I would, I would disagree with more practical. We do know that the, uh, so just to show everyone the sort of area that's outside the seventy-five and not within the setback of the road, um, this side of it is over, is about, you know, this small area here. And then on this side of the site is about right here. But, you know, looking at as far as utilities and as far as, you know, connecting it, we do tie into the sewer line and the, the, uh, holding tank. And as far as creating a footprint in this area that hasn't been developed before, which would include a parking area as well, assuming that we would, you know, have the ability to locate parking adjacent and not have people walking, parking their cars and walking across the site to the, to the parking area. That would be another impact on this site that doesn't exist right here in this, this nicely vegetated area, actually. This is where the vegetation is successful. Over here, I know there are trees, but, you know, the types of trees, if you look, are not the trees that are deeply rooted, rooted. They're the trees that can potentially fall down in windstorms and, you know, there's not a lot of deep soil. But one of the reasons why we are building here is one, to tie back into parking, but also, you know, to minimize, we're, you know, re-vegetating this area and in kind of improving upon this and relocating the structure. You're feeling that being less invasive on the site than starting with a blank slate on this side of the stra, site. And then also with the dock use as we kind of cram over here, um, we do know that sort of, there, there could be potential to have enasement from this property, um, from the other property to this property or have access to the dock. And crowding the building near the dock did not seem appropriate, um, for adjacencies where people come in here and there's somebody staying in a cottage here and it feels really tied into just this site. So that was another thing that we kind of considered, but essentially, yeah, thi, this part of the, the site is more highly vegetated with grasses. There's a very large tree here. There are less trees in general, but there are rock up properties. And to move this development, which is kind of already situated here, um, seems to be more invasive in my opinion. So that is why we pushed it back and then we tried to pull it as tight to the existing parking area as possible. And try to maintain that, not reworking it, not really, not enlarging it. Actually, I think it might have gotten slightly smaller. This is the old footprint so that we have more vegetated surfaces there. So in a sense, we're creating more vegetation where it's needed by developing that area and maintaining the existing vegetation on that side that would be interrupted by new parking lot areas and, you know, expanding, building footprints. So that was essentially the reasoning.
Okay. I don't necessarily agree, but that's all right.
Yeah.
Um, any other comments?
Uh, the only thing I would say is that, you know, under the, under the code, you know, one seventy-one-on-one dash seven, under relocation, section B one, it does talk about trees and removing the trees and relocating the structure. What we're planning at least, one native tree, three feet, whatever, and it gets into specifics and I know you've read all that.
Yep.
And, uh, and I imagine you're gonna follow that, right?
Yes, exactly. So we, we did look at that and then we're, we've added trees to this. And I think when you look at a site, you kind of do have to go hands-on and look at the specific locations. And that's why they included the distances in there. So with the plantings, they need to sort of, they can't be any further away from the highest angle of tide. And, yeah, we, the plan was to replant all of the trees that were removed and find appropriate places that they would actually thrive and not just topple over. Because that's sort of what happens around here. When, when you get a windy day, trees come down a lot.
It seems as though you are taking out of the flood hazard area.
Yes, exactly. That, that was almost, you know, like I said, originally we were thinking about renovating this. When you get to a certain threshold, which didn't make sense with, and you'd have to raise the structure up and then do these other steps. So that's why we pushed it back and we tried to push it back in accordance with the elevations of the land. So we don't have some high stepping up to the building. So it's kind of built in, nestled into the land and, you know. And like I said, trying to work it with the existing gravel parking area here, um, and between, you know, between the utilities which pass through here, um, and the other portions, that's sort of the, uh, reasoning for locating it behind that structure.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I appreciate all the laid out numbers on the bio and.
Yes, yes.
Let's see if you can follow the multiple applications.
Yeah, we try, I tried to like match up with sort of their format so that we can kind of, it's the best way to assure that you're actually accounting for everything by kind of taking that, helping it over and then, you know.
Uh, very thorough, easy to follow, so thank you. Okay, so, um, we, we need to go through a checklist. We, John, do you have any?
Well. I didn't make a separate checklist because I know you do this a lot, but we're all looking at the same section on reconstruction or replacement. And that is, uh, let's see, subsection C three. I believe, Jeff, what's our citation?
It's on here, uh.
One seventy dash one oh se, one oh one point seven, C three.
I took the question to be, don't we have to go through one of these now?
No, different section. No, you've got a much shorter section to look at.
Thank you.
We're gonna do the same greatest practical extent determination we did a month or two ago.
So if we go one seventy.
We'd like one for you, right?
First, I like one seventy, one-on-one.
Uh, yeah, any, any greatest practical extent, just gonna use those same things that, that the ordinance says you will.
One point seven, C three.
So there is no specific items, but really it comes down to three.
Greatest extent practical.
Three, three C.
Right there.
Right, now also, three, C three, small c, tells you that you have to tie in C two above. When you're figuring whether it meets the, there are only a few very specific requirements. For instance, one of them, in the middle of three A, uh, so C three A, which is what's cited on the agenda. There is a very specific mathematical requirement, uh, it starts with, let's see, one, two, three. Is that the eighth or ninth line down? If the reconstructed or replacement, no, I'm sorry, I'm telling you the wrong thing. Couple more lines out. If the total amount of floor area and volume of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback area, then no portion, if you're reading that sentence. That's a mathematical finding you're asking me to make. But there aren't, there's only a couple of, there's only a couple of requirements like that. The rest of it is your interpretation of whether it's invented properly.
It's pretty clear with the seventy-five foot line over crossing, it's a thirty foot line on the road. You have two little, I don't know what you call those shapes, but.
Right, so I think it wouldn't take you very long to be satisfied that that, that provision doesn't require you doing that. But you do have to look at it.
There really, there's no real practical way of locating the structure without, outside of seventy-five feet, you gotta think, you can't.
You can't, I'm sorry.
The question is, what's the most, they can just, in practice, the same. Yeah, I think in fairness, I understand. You weren't moving the main sewer away from the water. Not significant, not too far from anybody. Not insignificant. I was looking at more at the other impacts on the site. Sometimes nature tells you if it's already grass and bushes there.
Those pines are.
I think the, you know, the pines, if they're ten, twelve inches, what exists on the site, we've been there for a while. I think the grass is there because it was probably kept clear for a few purposes more than other things.
Yeah, I mean, if they're flat enough, you know, it's not the grass.
So.
But I think those.
So it seems, it seems like a lot of, I'm just questioning, do we go to a normal procedure of findings or? We don't, we don't give ourselves a block. We simply have to determine whether or not what they're proposing is a relocation to the greatest extent practical, whatever practical means. And whether it's documented. With approval for site plan.
Actually, I, I think you would make a finding that their proposed reconstruction in a different location, based on all of these items that you will go through and discuss, that it is, it meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. And that's the finding you need to make to, to approve the proposed.
And then we can, we can discuss utilities and vegetation and.
Absolutely, right.
All those other issues.
All of them, okay.
Considered. For our discussion.
Yeah.
Right, but there's no specific line item that we need to follow by. So right now, my finger's on one seventy dash one-on-one point seven, paragraph three, letter A. Reconstruction, it's on page one seventy dash one twenty-six.
And I, I suggest, I suggest it would probably be helpful to jump down to three C just for a moment. Because it tells you that, that you do have to consider all the criteria in C two above, which is above C three.
Let me try this. My move is that the application from Micabacker Group dated June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, for the parcel, uh, known as parcel A on Brand New Avenue, uh, that upon reviewing that, we kind of, we agree that it determines that the reconstruction and replacement shown in this plan meets the setback to the greatest poss, greatest practical extent. In addition, it meets the criteria in subsection C two, uh, of sections one seventy dash one seventy, one-on-one point seven. I second.
I second.
Can I ask you, or would I ask you to say in your discussion that you have taken into account the evidence you heard about the replacement of trees and so forth, as they're mentioned here? And so that would be part of your decision is you have relied on that evidence to decide that the tree connecting requirements are being satisfied?
That's exactly what I did.
I thought that's what you.
And we second the revised amendment. So it's, so who's writing down the, the line?
I, I'm getting this all, so. Evil scribe.
And I assume you'd like me to write up a written decision?
Yes.
Yes, please.
So it's been moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. Is there any other discussion on this motion? All right, I'm hearing not all of us in favor. All of us. And it's approved, seconded.
Thank you.
Yes, question. Is there no discussion with, can we bring up any questions, um, from the audience or no, that's, it's not appropriate?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I, I thought there was a, a time when there was some discussion with the audience, with your questions.
This is a strong, rather simple matter, but yes, well.
It's a simple matter, but it's also not a simple matter in some ways too. Because we, I live right across the street.
You are, for the right of your name.
My name is, um, Matilda McQuade and, um, I live at, um, my parents' house at forty-four Grand View. So the concern of mine is the, um, and I know you said that you didn't know what the intended use of this property is, but there was a concern that this would be somewhat of a commercial, um, enterprise, given the fact that the two residences are going to be rented out, um, on the other property. I guess that's parcel B, um, yes. And so there was concern that this would be a, a barbecue grill that could be maybe open to the public. And so I wanted to just understand what the intended use of this particular, if it's a residence, if it's, I mean, if it's a little bay.
Yeah, it would, it would be open to public, like, uh, people walking in off the street or something. It would be used by somebody renting this or renting the adjacent property, so it would only be used by a renter.
That's special residential zone, they, it's a dwelling, they have a use for a dwelling. They'd have to come to the planning board with a request for a change of use if they were gonna ever.
If they wanna rent the house, I think they don't have to come.
Have to rent the house, however, turn it to a, six people there for dinner and band parties, that's a change of use. And first of all, it's a special residential zone, so.
Yeah, I know.
It's not good for there. And as you can see from the ordinance, the use, we kind of discussed that somewhat through the discussions and we really don't have control through the ordinance of all this property is used, except for, for residential purposes. Whether it's rented or.
It's not a change.
Seasonal, somebody, we, that's not something that we consider. No one else presented, they're asking for a change of use, it's a cottage, being replaced by a cottage, residential zone. I think we might put that down as a, as a comment in our, in our minutes of approval. Or as part of the approval that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of saying, but I thought I did put it in there.
No commercial use?
Yeah, this is concerned about commercial use, this is, that's not in the code, not, again, just go back to the report.
So residential use is.
Yeah, that, of course, is part of the code, but you want me to put a condition into your approval?
I sense it's not.
Is it?
It's not permitted.
It's not permitted, I don't know if we need to make a condition, but at least we admitted it. If there's ever an issue now, there's a record that this is residential.
Right.
Ten minutes. If the application system says it's going to be a dwelling unit? You don't know, so we really need to clarify or muddy that up too much.
Yeah, and maybe we need the definition of the dwelling unit and, as I mentioned, it, it wouldn't be like, uh, someone puts a sign up and people start going there for their barbecues off the street. I mean, it would be a rental, so whether it's used by someone renting the adjacent property or, I don't know if there would be, I mean, you're not gonna be able to fit a lot of people into this place, but, you know, five or six people eating dinner, I could, I could see that. You know, I don't know how many people could actually fit into the dining area, but it's, it's not a large structure. But yeah, there is no plan for commercial use, it would be residential uses.
Yes, I understand. Any questions?
No.
My name is Judith Robertson and I am here on behalf of the Squish Point Association, which is the association in which this property is located. And I would just like to, um, add our associations, um, to the concerns that, um, Matilda has raised. We share those concerns, um, and it is important. We would like to be on the record and share those concerns.
Thank you. So this, this building, um, just as the existing building is, I assume, part of the Squish Point Association?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And we need to have a written decision.
And we need to have, the written decision will be signed by the board for a while.
Okay.
But per the rules, it takes effect as over the time of their vote.
Okay. Um, we'll be adjourned. We still have another one. Oh, there he is. Yeah.
Sorry, guys, somebody blocked me in, it took me twenty minutes to figure out who it was, so.
Still work for it?
Huh?
Do they still work for it?
Uh, it was a guest, so that makes it even harder. They blocked my car in, I apologize. I realize this is looking really bad after missing last month completely, so I'm, I'm at your mercy, Jeff.
So, um, moving on to the next, I am Lincoln Bay Holden.
Yes, I'm Scott Larson, I'm one of, one of the owners but managing partner.
So, um, you come before it because sexually you want to have freedom boat?
Well, Freedom Boat Club is, yes, that's correct.
And it's before this board because there is a change in use of this property, which needs to come before the board.
Okay.
My understanding is that there's no construction involved in this.
That's correct.
So using the existing dock, simple design of two of the boats.
Correct.
Anything else you want to add?
I want to ask you a question, because somebody said to me on the street, before this, if somebody walk up to Lincoln Bay Resort and pay some money and go and sail on there, like to sail on there, where do they have to be a guest?
Uh, currently, they have to be a guest.
So the difference in freedom boat and you don't have to be a guest?
Uh, you, you, actually, what you have to be is a member of Freedom Boat Club. Actually, guests would not be allowed to use it. I'm, I'm a Freedom Boat Club member, but I'm not a guest.
That clears up a lot.
Yes, sir.
Because the rumors on the street, you already can rent boats.
I, I love the rumor mill.
But you do have, you have an open restaurant, then anybody?
Absolutely, of course, yes, sir. I mean, you can come off the street, you can come off the street, and you can tie up to our dock and come into the restaurant. Uh, but you'd have to be a member of the Freedom Boat Club to take one of their two boats out.
You still have two boats?
Two boats.
Question, the question I have of, in terms of adding use to the property, in prior discussions, you have often used the cash register text. That is, if this were part and parcel of Lincoln Bay's financial structure, it might not be a new use, it would just be adding power boats to your sailboat.
Yep.
However, if it's a separate cash register, then it is a new use typically.
I understand, and, and using that analogy, what I would tell you is, is that there is a separate cash register, and it's not mine. It is their cash register.
Then my book, it's a new use.
Understood. So I think wrongly, what I, originally what we did is, we basically, if somebody wants to rent a mooring from us for the night, or for a week, or for a season, or a slip, you know, we can rent the slip, which is our cash register. And so Freedom Boat Club rented two slips from us, which affected our cash register, but to use the Freedom Boat Club, you have to be a Freedom Boat Club member.
So this is fairly simple, and I think there are two issues that play here. The first one is sort of an administrative, just a technical thing. I noticed that the applications are signed by White Sanford.
Former general manager, and probably the guy that was supposed to be here at the last meeting, that none of us knew about, so sorry about that.
So does that have any bearing on this, when we need to have this signed by someone else, or is this application now in force, signed by somebody who is no longer associated with Lincoln Bay?
Well, he was representing Lincoln Bay at the time.
But he's not here now.
He's not currently here, that's correct. I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to re-sign it if you need me to.
That's what I'm asking.
Lincoln Bay is the applicant, Lincoln Bay is here in front of it.
If you're satisfied with that, I just want to make sure we're not overlooking something. So that goes away, that's good. And the second motivation that you raised, and I think, I think we've all thought about it, since there's no construction, can we consider this a de minimis change?
Well, I have, may I ask one question? Because it's for people who have a membership in Freedom Boat, but potentially not guests of Lincoln Bay. What is the parking impact, how is that going to happen?
I mean, it's probably not much different than somebody that would come to eat dinner if it's not a guest. I mean, it's, we have, we have excess parking at Lincoln Bay for visiting guests for whatever purpose. In this particular case, if somebody were to take one of those boats out, that could be a car or two that would be there for that.
And what's the duration of rental?
So the, the, I, I happen to be able to tell you this because I actually am a member. Um, so you, basically what you have is you have two two-hour rentals per day, excuse me, two rental times per day. One is eight to one, and one is two to seven, or two to dusk, and that slowly changes as it gets darker through the season.
So basically, you're looking at four hours?
Uh, two sets of four hours, yes.
Two sets of four hours.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a clarification about the de minimis rule. There are two applications in front of you. One is for site plan approval. Site plan approval has a possible de minimis section that you can consider. The second, the second application is for a shoreland use permit. To conduct this use in the shoreline zone, they need a permit, and you have to go through a long checklist for that, and there is no de minimis section for that. So I just wanted to point out that de minimis only relates to the site plan approval section, it doesn't relate to the shoreline permit.
So we're dealing with the site plan first.
Yeah, and, and under the rules, you always have to do a site plan ahead of building permit, or use permit.
Can I move that we do not read every single sentence? Either case?
Yeah. We've all read this more than enough times.
So if we look at, and this is what, um, this is what John, I think it'd be, it's section one seventy-sixty-four, if you want to read it. Planning board made by a majority vote, waive the review procedure for de minimis projects where its pines development or expansion will not significantly change the nature or intensity of the use, or the exterior dimensions of any existing construction. Such waivers shall be issued in writing, shall state the reason, and it has been granted. No changes shall be made in any project which has received site plan approval without approval of said change.
So sixty-six becomes sixty-four?
Six, one seventy-sixty-four is what's implied.
Guess what it is before is sixty-six.
Okay. So I will move that this site plan review be considered a de minimis change, of course, with one seventy-sixty-four.
Second?
Second, move second bit, any other discussion on this? All votes in favor? Yes, okay.
De minimis is good, right?
Yes.
And by the way, it's misspelled in ordinance. It ends in M I S, because that last I is missing.
So we are on now to the second application.
Is the one that says.
We need to, we actually need, we decided to consider this a de minimis change, we need to actually vote on it.
You just voted on it.
We just voted on it.
Now we're going to do one seventy-four, one eleven.
Be de minimis change.
Yes, therefore needing no further review.
No further review.
Right, that, that's the decision you made? To waive the requirements?
All right, making sure. All right, so we're on now to the second application, which is change in use in shoreline zones.
Actually, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's actually, it's a new use, not necessarily a change in use. They're, they're adding something to what they already have got.
Changes.
And this is one oh one eleven.
The harbor's a shoreline zone, so. So the, the use and the information in terms of what Lincoln Bay plans to do is the same as for the site plan. Simply now must go through the required, it's a light use. One, one thing I think we should perhaps discuss, I don't know if now's the right time to do it, but seems to be, in adding this use, there, there are two key questions. Uh, one is, does the property support multiple uses? The answer, I think it's obviously yes, and it's a normal story. I think this is there, they aren't accessory to Lincoln Bay. The second topic might be to discuss, I think, a limit on the number of boats this might grow to. Two is obviously not a big deal, I'm sure four is a big deal, but if it had to be ten or something, that's, that's to be a bigger deal. And so I think the planning board might consider approving this with a caveat up to some limit of number of boats, before then we need to come back. It's approved for two boats, meaning half come back, three, one, three. Yeah, I would, I would not approve it for two, I would approve it for some greater than two.
Four, six, or something.
Yeah, four, six, and then if it grows beyond six, you need to come back.
I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, the practicality of, of it is that we can't go beyond two boats without expanding the dock anyway.
I know the docks are.
Exactly, so, I mean, I, you know, I, and I like where your head is.
It's just a city now.
But I, but I will tell you that the, the practical is that we really can't add many more boats to that.
I'm okay with that, I just think it's.
I do, I do like your idea of four or six, that gives us that. But I'm happy to, I'm certainly happy to work with you on whatever that number is.
You know, Bill, that's, that's not a bad idea, and I think the other reason I would say four, something like that, is that in case there, one of the boats breaks down, or it's in maintenance, or whatever, and it's there and they have to tie it off, and then we get another one, they're not, they're not against what they're trying to do.
Yeah, four, six. Just go on to the speaker, planner, operation.
Yes, sir. If, if it's okay, um, I would just invite you all, I, I think I understand where you're going with this, but I would sort of imply that the application before you is only for the two. That's what you're being asked to vote on. I think if Lincoln Bay Holdings were interested in doing more, they would have asked for that in their application at this point. The board's role in this case is only to vote on an application that's before you, and not to, you know, sort of design the project for them.
I, I believe that she gives us way more credit than we deserve. If we had thought about it, we probably would have, you know, asked for more, but in fact, it is two boats, currently.
What's that currently, for the foreseeable future?
Uh, well, at least for this season, and without, once again, I mean, if, I don't know if you've been to Lincoln Bay, but the practical, the practical matter is, is that our dock doesn't have much room to do much else beyond what it's currently doing with those two boats.
And so you, you'd have to build bigger dock?
Or, or we'd have to, or we'd have to get, I mean, you know, and, and this, Freedom Boat Club is their own entity, right? So, I mean, they're, they're not interested, I mean, I would say, well, we could put one out on a mooring, but they're not interested in that, they want, they want it on the dock. And the practical matter is, is that we don't have much more room on our dock to do that. And if we did, it would be displacing somebody that might be coming in for a meal or something else, and, and that's not what we're trying to do.
So I think that we should limit it to two.
Just thought. We don't limit anybody else, any other business, any other application that comes before us for any other reason. I think we all understand, we don't want too many boats in the wrong type of dock, but we have a harbor master, we have a port years committee, we have a site plan that be on dock changes. I, I, I like the planner's idea that you keep it simple. Let's approve what's in front of us in the near future, case, so, so on.
I was just looking through this, I don't see anything that in the, in the shoreline zoning, or actually approving the use, as the use for additional boats, I don't think it's specified by.
We're not, we're not, we're approving the use of boats.
By a firm entity or fine entity.
By a firm entity, and I, I don't know that the number is even in this application.
Mr. Chair asking for two.
The, the reason why it comes up at all for a shoreline permit is the requirement for a commercial use in the shoreline zone.
Right.
So that's why it comes up. It's not specially linked to boat use. But also, in, in the decision, we do have to say that we have approved the application, if the application is for two boats, then that's what you're approving. We have to say something, presumably it would be related to the application.
I guess that's my question, is under the, I was looking through the application under the shoreline zone section, and I don't think I see anything that specifically says two boats.
The, actually, the second page, right here.
The application by four, the club will have two boats, our dock's available, we use only one.
I didn't read it going the way, but we have historically, we've done on commercial operations, trash, and all sorts of things, so I don't think this is outside the pale that we might do that, but I don't see why. So I.
He says, we'll have that works in there.
Well, so what we need to do is go through the application, and that involves the checklists.
There, Mr. Chairman, if I could offer maybe, I hope it will be a time-saving suggestion. You might want to take a, a motion to all at once, find that any of the requirements that relate to a building of a structure are all non-applicable. Because there's no proposal to build a structure. Except that there was a recent increase in the size of a wharf, was that anything to do with this project?
You, no, it has nothing to do with that, that was approved last year, I believe. We haven't done it, but that was approved a year ago, and that has nothing to do with the Freedom Boat Club.
If that's not tied to this, that's all I care about. And, and so, in other words, if there's no structure involved, instead of on each item that mentions something to do with a structure, you look at it and decide it's not applicable, you could decide en masse that anything that has to do with a structure is not applicable.
Well, we're looking at boats and parking in that as well.
And you still have. Uh, yes, and, and I think there, there is something in here about if you're near a dock or something. But maybe what we should be doing is just quickly running through to see what we find that isn't not applicable.
Well, I guess that details one through the list then.
Well.
Well, I would say A.
Let's take a quick, yeah, right, A's out, and Jeff, you already read the permit, right?
Okay, let's look at, on page two, for instance, where there's.
Where you can get your drawdown, where it will maintain safety and.
Well, that's, that's exactly.
That's what I was looking at.
That's exactly what they say, is the applicant activities will A, B, C through I, H, R.
Right, he's already done it for us.
He's already done it for us.
The application, the applicant has said.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, but you have to make a finding that you accept that evidence.
So let's take your list that you have there. This refers to the list, says shoreline zone checklist, do not apply here, yeah, this is A. Yeah, right, don't line up.
No.
This, this paragraph lines up with C three, A through I, exactly. Yes, it does. So I will, I will move that we accept the applicant's statements, A through I, on the first page of this application. Second page.
Next one has something to do with floodplains, so.
Okay, um.
Next one is. I'm working on a lot of sanders. One of those setbacks. The success rate standard, structures, special exemptions. I'm not sure there's anything else there that fits until you get to, let you stay on page four. Makes no difference. Talking by a system slips.
I can't keep track, keep track, where are you?
The A on page four.
Okay, so those are minimal lots scanners, and since, since no lot. It would, this use will still take place at a certain location. It would, this use will still take place at a certain location.
It's a slip of the dock.
It's a slip of the dock, but it doesn't have a lot area, I guess, then.
Some matter.
It doesn't apply.
Well, the only thing that would might, is public and private recreational facilities.
Well, are there, you know.
Sorry, you're right there.
Now, Jeff says, we've got a minimal lot area for the use, presumably people are traveling onto the property to get to the slip and on and off the boat and so forth, and so this would, so this would be a commercial use, and it would have to have at least, within, it would have to have forty thousand square feet for this use, and Jeff is saying that the overall lot has plenty for that use and the use, the other uses that already exist there.
So you're saying that we need to make a statement of complies?
Yep.
That's on page four, the second item in the dock.
That's exactly what I was.
Public and private recreational facilities.
Is that recreation, we're calling it a commercial use though. Oh, well, that's per principle structure. You know what, in either event, it needs to have forty thousand square feet, so whichever way we designate it, it's got the amount of space.
So you're saying not complies as opposed to not.
Yes. Yes, that is applicable, but the application complies.
So that's number two, I'm sorry, A one.
A one.
And second one down.
Is that two tells you not to hound in, land under the water, and no one is? We're going through the ordinance requirements for a use within the shoreline zone, because if those requirements are not met, the application can't be approved. Many, or even most of those ordinance requirements relate to building a structure, and this application does not involve the building of a structure, so that's kind of preventing us from going quite step by step, because so much of this is not applicable.
Sorry.
So simply fine to do is short-circuit a very lengthy process. I'm not sure what six is. It's also twenty-three pages long, is that all?
Well, I think that's, I think that's it for A. When we go to B, that's all structures.
So B does not comply, and that's on page five.
Yeah, not apply, it does not apply, that's all about structures.
And that carries through.
So we can find C.
C, which is on page eight.
Right.
Now, here's docks, ports, bridges and other structures, and uses intending, extending over or below the normal high water.
But none of that is part of the application.
Right.
Except they're not proposing to do any, they're going to use those things, but they're not doing them as part of the application.
So it's not applicable.
So C is not.
D is campground, not applicable, bottom of page nine.
D is, okay.
Who is N A?
E.
Who wants to take E?
E, individual private campsite.
N A.
Who wants F? This is commercial. Yeah, for commercial industrial uses, the following new commercial industrial uses are prohibited within the shoreline zone, basically.
And you need to make a finding that none of those prohibited items are in fact involved in this application.
I see. Saying none of the itemized uses, and item F, applies to this application. I've got a little page. The next one is G, parking areas, that does not comply.
No, he complies because.
No, no, well, I beg your pardon.
He's only going to have two cars a day, so, but he's having cars.
And the parking is part of the application.
The use requires parking.
Okay.
But the parking be covered because you have the restaurant or outside use anyway, so it complies, no parking.
It complies.
Why? So that complies.
I'm making a note about the existing.
H, we have two, H is going to help roads and drive.
Roads and drive.
I think that was better, so H, yeah.
That was good.
It'd be a whole way to say important signs. Not proposing any signs, are you?
Signs?
Signs, Freedom Boat, Freedom Boat.
Well, I mean, there's a couple little signs that are down at the dock that say Freedom Boat Club, but I'm not putting anything on the street for signs.
Yeah, I have a question for Tom, this is a little bit urgent. If I have, you know, fifty acres, and I put a sign in the middle of it, does the town care? Does it count as a sign?
The real answer is the town shouldn't care, but sometimes the people who write ordinances don't see it that way, or they don't write it that way, but actually, these are use of signs in the resource protections district, is that us? Stream protection, special residential, general residential? We're general residential. Okay. Other, well, so I suppose.
They're not, if it helps, they're not permanent signs. They're not, they come out and they go in at the end of the season, and they're not affixed to anything, they're just little sandwich boards.
But they're probably not discussed in the application, so.
I would just assume.
But you have the applicant make a statement?
Or just say they're not.
None of the signs, I would say a lot of them. Well, could I just quickly ask him a couple questions?
Wait.
Okay. Are there any signs related to goods and services sold on the premises as part of this project?
The only sign that's there just says Freedom Boat Club.
Okay, and that's all you're suggesting is going to happen?
That's right.
Okay, good. You won't have more than two of those per premises, I think you said just one?
There's, I can confirm that there are no more than two of those per premise.
And they won't exceed twelve square feet in the aggregate, too?
No, we would affect our view if we did that.
Okay, residential doesn't count, trespassing hunting, sign related to public safety shall be a lawful restriction, no sign will be higher than twenty feet above the ground?
Absolutely correct.
And signs may be illuminated only by shielded, non-flashing lights.
They are not illuminated at all.
So you're complying. That's the signs.
Okay. This is my subject, stormwater runoff, not applicable. Stormwater runoff, we'll go through the covers.
Yeah, we got bigger problems.
Scientific waste disposal, not applicable. Keep it on the boat. Who wants to do essential services? Essential services, let's see, where feasible, the installation of essential services shall be limited to existing public ways and existing service or not applicable, not applicable.
I beg your pardon, though, is any power being supplied to the slip area?
I mean, not, there's no power being supplied to the slip area that didn't exist.
This is already there.
Correct.
I'll do M, not applicable.
All right.
That's our geologist.
What page are we on, how we doing?
We're up to eight sixteen.
All right.
I can do M, he did M.
Okay. No, seaweed, I guess, maybe underneath.
Weed, weeds on the bottom of the boat.
No comments about spreading manure?
No manure, well.
Who wants timber harvesting?
There's a lot of manure.
That could be a tough one. How about no timber harvesting? No timber harvesting is anticipated by these boats?
None that I'm aware of. Now, a guy did try to harvest a few rocks with one last season, but I hear you, yeah.
And not taking vegetation.
That could come under geology, couldn't it, Lee?
Yes, yes.
D is flaring vegetation. On the bottom of page nine, it's a top, they all make a look up on the shore of the Wow, yeah, that looks good, what old baby, twenty-two.
Uh-oh, Scott's going to get out of here early. Erosion and sediment control.
Right, that's two on page twenty-two.
That's mine.
Erosion and sediment control.
N A.
N A.
Soils, N A.
Who wants water quality?
I'll do water quality since I was sampling this morning, what am I saying?
Yes.
That's complies, because he says specifically that will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation in service water.
They comply.
Are there any archaeologists in the room? If you're done.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say something for the record?
Yes.
We make fun of the extensive terms of this ordinance, which I certainly did not write, but I want to point out, it covers so many areas, because those areas may well be very important in other cases, and I wouldn't want the public to get the impression that we were joking in general, we're just in this specific case, so few of these requirements apply to this application, but nevertheless, we have to look at all of them.
Okay, we have no microphones in here. Okay, so we have gone through the checklist, we have identified those items that comply, those which do not comply. We have a hundred of those, so it's appropriate to, in the motion, improve this application. I think you just spoke, you said you identified the things that do comply, you identified the things that do comply, they don't comply, yes. I thought that's what I said, but we're not. Close, now close. So.
We've identified both. We've identified both the do's and the don'ts.
Yes, that's right. Anybody out there have any comments or questions? If you're done, then I think if the motion can prove this application. Do we need to specify those things, complying, no?
I'm wondering.
What kind of group is that? Do you have a listen to that, okay.
I made a motion to approve this application, in that we have reviewed the ordinance, and we have discovered what does apply and what doesn't apply, and we've made a finding that this application meets with our criteria.
Second? Second. Certainly, any discussion on this?
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Sorry about last month.
Part of the season's half over.
Listen, I'm just, we got it done, so that's good, thank you, guys, thanks.
I think that completes it, that's the items.
We have a quick discussion based on the conclusive discussion we had last meeting, and we're waiting to meet our new planner, and not that we're going to discuss and plan anything tonight, but maybe set the stage so that we can have a discussion on some of the issues that I know are meaningful to us, especially after seeing the preliminary library presentation last month.
I have the list, I didn't actually bring it, because we do, we always have other issues, so we bring it, I wish. Isabel, I assume you're going to give the rest of our planning board a review for the foreseeable future?
Sure am.
We do have a list, and I saw, I was going to leave the list, Isabel, before I did, and I thought I'd share that with you, and so prior to the next meeting, we'll jump to speed, I'll try to do, but certainly, if you have some thoughts on that, I could.
I've been talking lately now, but what I'll do is just put some line things together, like I said, to you, to send people.
Tom, Isabel? Yeah, I would say since there's nothing else on the agenda for tonight, and wasn't advised to do a format discussion, you can direct, you have the right to the chair.
Yeah.
And we can, and we can talk, yeah.
If you have something specific you want to mention tonight.
No, I just want to get back to the downtown business district, and the fact that we have so many, uh, setback rules and things that are just not progressive if you want your downtown to be successful, I, she's going to help us sort through those. Two years ago, we attacked, we had a silly ordinance that said, we have a comprehensive plan that says we'd love to see retail downstairs and apartments upstairs, but our ordinance says you have to have ten thousand square feet of land per use, so Tom and I went around and looked at every single parcel in the downtown business district, and ninety-four percent are non-compliant. What a great zoning we have, if ninety-four percent of our properties are non-compliant, and now we still have silly rules of, if it's a residence, they want a fifteen-foot setback. It's not silly, that makes a lot of sense.
Except.
Except in the downtown.
And it's also in the downtown, so it needs to be revisited. We also say commercial can be ten feet, then we say all others. Well, there are a lot of non-commercial, like a library specifically, that's not commercial technically, so we would fall back into unnecessarily burdensome setback. And when you look, and when you look at where they are downtown, let's not have that conversation now, but we want to review those things, that over the next year, we can possibly do what we did three years ago, which was take a bite out of the apple to make it a little better, and that's what we want to talk about.
Those other issues, sort of, we saw in the library, the whole library expansion issue, we need to look at that and see how that fits into the ordinance, or does the ordinance allow it to make some stuff that.
Well, we can't do variances, so we need to, our board can't do that, but when you look at the ordinance, fifteen-foot setback, and the hang next door is a pavement all the way up to the property.
Yeah.
Real issue is parking there, so long as they're not parking lots, and so requiring that they have additional parking spaces, like five parking spaces for eighty thousand feet of the debt, I mean, like, excuse me?
A side park department, too, is also an option, I think, of course, a library and things like that, and because we got, we got, we do the facade, and I mean, well, yeah, the lazy facade, right, and that was great back in the worst of the day, but I think that's that.
But certainly a lot of policy issues, for your time, that ordinance required a facade on the steel we were, and they built one, and they were just awful, and took it down.
Right.
I think we could advertise a workshop on all of these items, and sort of discuss them in greater detail at a later time.
Can we just have a agenda item on our next meeting?
We'd also do a workshop item on your next meeting.
Yeah, we've been kicking these things down the road for over a year.
Okay.
Now it's time to move forward, draft some, I've seen, make recommendations to the select board, and hopefully draft up some ordinances, send those out to the select board, and get them on the, into the formal warrants for next time. Is there anything you wanted to convey to us?
Just wanted to say hello and introduce myself, I'm not sure how much of my background was shared with you, I am coming.
Coming closer so we can hear you.
Okay. I'm coming from the city of South Portland, where I was one of the planners there, and then before that, I worked as the assistant planner for the city of Saco, so I have experience sort of working with coastal communities and all of the additional stuff that that entails, and I'm really interested in sort of the climate change adaptation planning aspect. When I was in South Portland, I also staffed the Affordable Housing Committee, so I know that that's something that you folks are really interested in, and I'm excited to work with you there, and then, sort of as an aside, I've also done work a lot with historic preservation and served on the committee to update the statewide historic preservation plan in 2020 and 21. I think that's a little bit about me, I also have pretty extensive site plan review experience coming from South Portland, where we were doing, I was the planner that was assigned to all of the housing authorities projects, so during my time in South Portland, I had reviewed, oh gosh, probably more than a hundred and fifty units of affordable housing, which is sort of one of the things that I am really proud of, and, yeah, I'm really excited to be here, I sort of wanted to come into this role, to settle down in a smaller community and put down roots, so that's sort of the impetus for me. to settle down in a smaller community and put down roots, so that's sort of the impetus for me coming here. But I'm really excited to work with all of you, and I've sort of been looking into what you guys have been working on in the past, and I'm excited to help move those things forward.
Certainly, neither.
I think you said some magic words that we like.
Right, so, we get together on Friday, and, um, comments with you, and. Any of the board members, of course, want to send something out, send it to all of the board members, and Jeff, and now that Isabel's here.
Yeah, we used to just send it to Jeff and then he would forward it.
Yeah.
After we get together sometime, obviously, we'll.
We'll figure that all out. All right. We have one, one housekeeping chore, and that is, according to the ordinance, I tried to send an email, but that email was just, excuse me. We are required to elect a chair of the planning board.
Sunday, Tom Churchill. I said it, it's like bad news, I can't get through it.
I third it.
But it probably wouldn't be any good. Um, so.
Especially if we can do Zoom all winter with you.
Um, yeah, if you're gonna go to Florida for three weeks in the wintertime, you'd have to be chill.
Oh, perfect, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, you're welcome.
We have confidence in you, Tom.
Chairman?
Yes.
I got asked a question by another lawyer this past week. And it was about, is there a deadline, is there a submission deadline for submitting things to you to be discussed at a meeting like this? And I don't think you have one. You, you do, one of the ordinance have the power to adopt such a rule. And so I thought I'd ask you, maybe you do have one?
You do have one, we just have never paid any attention to it.
Okay.
We passed a set of rules and regs probably eight years ago now. I can pick them up and circulate them, and we can see if we still wanna have them or change them.
That's probably a good idea, my next question was gonna be, do you care? Because if you don't care, you don't have to have such a rule.
Well, people always have the right to come to the meeting as an important discussion.
But, but an applicant in particular doesn't necessarily have the right to give you new information. You could have a rule that said, if you give us information that wasn't met by the deadline, we'll take it. But we're not necessarily gonna discuss it that night because we haven't had a chance to look at it.
And it hasn't been part of the public.
And it hasn't been part of the public review and so forth in process, so. Yeah, and, and how, where you wanna fall in that scale, and how rigid you want to be about it, that's up to you guys. I, my answer to the other lawyer who asked me the question was, there's nothing in the ordinance, except that it says you can adopt such rules, and I said, I would ask, have you had such rules?
I think the thing we struggle with is Jeff struggles with us, if we wanna talk about something and he says, well, the register only publishes, I need fourteen days, and that's Tuesday, if you told me yesterday, so now it's twenty-one days. Versus the register publishes, they follow Morning Catch seven days a week, or six days a week. And at some point, can we follow other towns and not be limited by the?
Print publication.
Print publication limitations, and Jeff's ability to announce, we wanna talk about affordable housing and a workshop in less than twenty-one days.
I think it would make a lot of sense if you were allowed to publish things on the town's website. I, I'm sure that's the wave of the future, and I mean, let's face it, that's already where we are these days. The requirement to publish in the newspaper is simply a holdover from the old days. It's not necessarily a bad thing, but what if you had both options? You could publish the newspaper as well as on the town's website, something like that. I, I, I haven't even looked into it, I'm just suggesting something.
Would it make sense for the applications to go through the newspaper? Because honestly, you look through the paper, and you see, oh, this committed application on freedom boat going to Lenning Bay. But, and if you have an interest, I think the earlier one tonight had people that were interested, and that's probably where they found out that they would. But if we're gonna sit and say, we wanna have a follow-up conversation on a five-foot setback for a sidewalk next to the library that hasn't been submitted yet, and we have to go through twenty-one days to get together to talk about that.
You should just, you should be allowed to just put it on the town's website. It's gonna be a work session of the planning board and such and such a place, if you wanna show up, show up.
Is there any state requirement for advertising planning board agendas?
I don't know about planning board, there are a number of statutory requirements for things having to be published in the newspaper. For instance, notice of public hearings when you're proposing the ordinance agenda. By the statute, those have to be published in the newspaper. But plenty of times over the years, I have asked for changes in statutes, and sometimes you get a statute changed. And I'll bet there are people out there studying, can we work in web publication, website publication in addition to newspaper publication? So it's worth looking at.
What you're saying right now is there is nothing in the statute about remote communication. As a matter of fact, I've been looking at the statutes, and, uh, just a nonprofit organization statute, and they don't, they talk about remote communication, but they really don't get into all the ins and outs of it.
No, but a nonprofit corporation, which a lot of the groups we work with are.
Yeah.
The, the corporate law has been updated in the past couple of years.
I know that.
So that's what you've just been reading?
Yes.
And they don't, you're right, they don't give a whole lot of details. But frankly, I use that to my advantage, it's simply put in the bylaws what I wanna be able to do. I feel that it falls within what they're allowing. But I wish they had broader suggestions on how to handle these.
The Oregon statutes have a very lengthy conversation about it.
Yeah. And, and our problem, of course, is whenever we wanna make a change like that, if, no matter what the statute says, even if the statute gets changed, if our ordinance says we have to advertise in the newspaper, then we have to advertise in the newspaper. So it's a bit of a process to get where you want to be. But it's, but it's not, I don't think it's necessarily gonna be that difficult if we wanna try to change this.
I was gonna say, can't we change the ordinance to include remote communication?
Yes, and, and, but your follow-up question's gonna get me to research, what you just asked me a moment ago is, or someone asked me, are there statutory restrictions on that? There certainly are statutory restrictions on virtual meetings of the board for public participation. To begin with, it was no, that COVID came along, and we got emergency rules, and now we have some post-emergency rules. It's, it's in a changing situation.
I, I'm, this is memory, in the presentation and in some follow-up talking conversation afterwards, somebody came up with a suggestion that we should take one-twenty-seven where it comes into town and change it so it doesn't go late by the library. Right now, you drive all the way down to Townsend Avenue and turn right, and they should go way here, right in front of Fire.
Howard Street, take twenty-seven on Howard Street.
And, and make that only a one-way, safety, people crossing the street, it's, it's horrible out there if you go out there in the summertime. But we wouldn't have first idea, who do you go to to do that, obviously DOT and all this kind of stuff, which is naturally something our planner hopefully is gonna help us with. So if we go through what we're going through, it'll be December before we have that conversation.
I got you. And yet.
We adopted rules and regulations in December oh-eight.
Ah.
And they say fully completed applications must be submitted fourteen business days prior to the planning board meeting, which they, which should be scheduled. Canciller or additional information must be delivered to the CEO, no later than one week prior to the planning board meeting.
I suggest that's worth some, it's worth some thought. I'm generally against having rules that we ignore. So you might wanna look and see, do you still wanna have that rule, or do you want a different version of the rule, or what have you? But then, next time someone asks me, I'd be able to give them an answer.
So some of those are still in place, if they are.
A lot of the people.
Yeah, well, I'll send it to Jeff, and he can circulate it to everyone, and then we can decide if we wanna get rid of them or not.
All right. So we'll continue to send emails and hopefully we can have conversations, we're not gonna order extra workstations during the summer. We'll just, we'll just meet at one.
Try not to have.
But remember, don't have discussions on board business via email or anywhere outside.
Send an email to Jeff, and he sends it to the whole board.
That, that works.
And I just, I wanna remind everybody that she is a part-time planner, so she's here twenty hours, which includes meetings, and in DeRisgata, so, I mean, we.
Yeah.
We just have to set up priorities.
Regularly.
We, we understand that.
Sure, okay, I just wanna make sure, you know, there are priorities and directives from the board of selectors as well.
Okay, it's time for ice cream. Give me ice kind of fuck to do.
No.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.